Tonight, I'd like to start with the 6:30 hearing. We're going to start with 6:30 hearing for the 701, 713, Boston Turnpike Commercial Building. This is the BACH hearing. We do have a request for a withdrawal. I'm going to ask Ms. McAllister to please explain.
So, the applicant has submitted a withdrawal request and they have submitted a revised application for to be heard of the hearing on October 24th at the next hearing. So, tonight we will not be opening that hearing. We'll be voting to withdraw and then we'll be voting to open this hearing as amended next deviation. Does the board have any questions?
I don't think so.
All right. Okay, so just to be clear, if you're here for the 701, 713, Boston Turnpike, we will not be hearing that appeal this evening. It has been withdrawn and we'll hear it again at the next meeting. Just want to be clear on that. Hi, everybody!
Have a good night, everyone. I don't know about that.
You'll have to come October to see what the new application is.
You'll be re- notified with the scope of the revised application, okay? So, anything included in that notification will be included.
I do have a follow-up question.
So, can you direct any questions to the planning department? Okay, you can find our phone number and email on the website, okay? Superma.com.
Thank you, we actually have to move on.
There's another meeting on October 16th and 17th for the same or not?
Please contact the planning department. I'm not sure exactly where.
Okay.
Thank you, everyone. Okay, on to the next 6:30 meeting, or 6:30 appeal, excuse me. All right.
Kristen will take care of that.
Thank you. Okay, our next hearing.
Yeah, we got to vote to withdraw.
Can I get a motion to withdraw?
I move to withdraw, let's see, the application for a special permit under Section 6, Table 1, to locate a sales room for automobiles in a garage and repair shop. That's 701 and 713, Boston Turnpike in the Commercial District, Commercial Business District.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Thank you. All right, next hearing. This is to hear the appeal of CGPILLC, William De Petri, 259 Turnpike Road, Southborough, Mass. 01772, for a special permit to the Shrewsbury zoning bylaws, Section 4B, to demolish and reconstruct a pre-existing non-conforming dwelling and alter a non-conforming lot upon property located at 66 School Street in the rural A District. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessors Tax Plate 18, Plot 000014. Could the applicant please introduce themselves? Give us a little bit of background.
Thank you to the chair, for the record, because I know you know me. My name is Richard Ricker and I'm attorney with offices on 11 Maple Avenue, and I'm here representing the applicant. To my right is Bob De Petri, who is Bill De Petri's brother. They're in business together. And also Raymond Holden, who is behind us in the first row here, is the property owner. Let's see if I can help that out.
Having some feedback.
This is really your classic appeal for a special permit, where you have a house that is there on the lot. It's a structure that's on the lot. This new single-family home, if you allow this special permit, would be on a conforming lot. It would be a non-conforming lot, with the exception of, would still have a 34.2 setback, instead of the much lesser setback, much more encroaching setback that's there now. Respectfully, it's still a single-family home for a single-family home. It is, you have the elevations in your packets. I would suggest to you respectfully that it's a very attractive home, a good replacement for the structure that is there on the lot right now. The De Petries are well-known builders, a great reputation. We're happy to have them with us on this project. So, I don't expect there'll be any nuisance value whatsoever in any way, not with noise, congestion, traffic, or any other type of nuisance. Therefore, and because there's no further non-conformities that this adds, I'd ask you to approve it as a special permit. And if you have any questions, if you have to answer them.
Thank you. Ms. McAllister, would you like to add anything? All right, let's go through the board, see what questions we might have. Peter?
I just had a procedural question. I noticed that the application mentioned a variance and a special permit. This is just a special permit, though, right?
No, this was a, that was a belt and suspenders application.
Okay.
And until we had the ruling from the town council on whether a variance was required, we had put it in that way.
Okay.
So, I would be moving to withdraw on the variance request.
Okay, okay. It doesn't look like the variance was noticed anyway, so I think we're fine.
Right.
That's all for me.
Lisa?
I just wanted to clarify that the current house will be completely removed.
Yes.
And the proposed house on this plot plan will not extend into any area where the removed house was.
Actually, it does.
Goes all the way?
It reaches into the, into the area where the new, where the old house is.
Okay.
You can see on the plan that's before you, there's a proposed house and house to be removed. The house to be removed is the darker
Yes.
Hatch, hatched lines.
Yep.
And the other house, you can see the lines go within that, out to that 62-foot setback.
Okay, thank you. The jut out to the north?
Yep, that, that goes away.
Okay, so there, I'm, now I see it. The, there is a
It's kind of an extension of 62-foot line
Yes, exactly.
The lines are just hard to make out.
And the lines are hard to make out. They're not in a different color or slash, so I, I'm, you've confirmed it for me. Thank you.
I'm not sure we do have the renderings. Do we?
We don't have any renderings, but
I'd be happy to give them to you, if I may.
If you have, it'd be helpful. Can't hurt.
That could have clarified my question. That's okay. Yes.
So, while we're reviewing this, Anne, any questions?
No, thank you.
Patrick?
No questions.
Okay, I'm just going to take a second to review what you just gave us and then
Sure.
Okay. This is a public hearing. We are going to ask if the public would like to be heard on this matter. If you would like to be heard, please stand up. There's a microphone there and you need to identify by name and address, please.
Yes, hello, my name is Cindy Barco, 5 Sheen Drive, and I'm all on board with this, except there's just a question I have. On September 17, I received a letter and it says, "A notice is hereby given the following public hearing." It says, "You're receiving this notice because you are on record with the town assessor's office as owning property within 300 feet of the subject property." It says, "The appellant, William De Petri," and it just says that where they're going to put this, it's going to be 300 feet from property that I own. And it just says that there will be built, reconstruct a pre-existing non-conforming dwelling, and alter a non-conforming lot upon property located at 66 School Street. What happened was, my ex and I, we bought the property that's behind there. And so, I don't want to be anybody to not be beholden to let this go. You know what I'm saying? So, I just wondered why I got this letter. So, I went up to town here and I got over here from the real estate people, I got, you know, my house, they gave that, and all the lines and that. And they said, "Okay, well, if you have any questions about the letter, go down to the planning board." So, I did that, and then they just basically said, "Well, you know, we do this out of politeness, you know, nothing to see here, kind of folks move along." So, the only thing I'm wondering is that, why do you send the letter? You know, if it's going to be whatever they're going to build, now, obviously, I'm non-conforming here, but a non-conforming lot and a non-conforming dwelling or whatever, and I thought, I don't know, they're going to put something like a Dean Park bistro or whatever they're going to do. So, I don't want to be a person and not give this person the option to build something that they want. But I'm just wondering, why did I get this letter?
Sure. Good, good question. I'm going to let Ms. McAllister explain.
And do you want to see any of these papers?
No, we, we are
Okay, thank you.
We're aware and that's part of
Yes, I'd like to give this man a chance to build what he would like, but I just like the town, because I love this town. I love Dean Park. We all know I used to teach here and everything. So, I want to give this man the chance and just give me, and that's my neighbor Bill over there, and I want to give you guys the chance to, you know, do this. So, why did I get this letter? Thank you.
Ms. McAllister is going to explain the procedure on that.
Explain the law. Yeah, so essentially, you got that notice, as it says, because you own property within a certain radius of the property that is before us today, right? The appeal of the property that's before us. So, it's a simple notification of what's happening so that you, as the abutter, we call it, is aware of the project. Attorney Ricker has just presented the plans and given kind of an overview of what the proposed house will be. I'm sure he could provide more detail if needed, but it was just a notification of what was happening so you were aware and could come to the hearing tonight.
So, it's not going to be anything that's going to devalue my property, is it?
I'm going to ask Attorney Ricker to explain one more time.
If I may.
Yes, please.
And I know you, Attorney Ricker.
Yes, I know. I hope it's a good thing.
It's a good thing.
It's to replace the house that's on that lot
Right.
With a new house, basically. All right, the reason you were notified is because you own property within 300 feet of the property lines of this, of this property. So, that's the reason for your notification. So, it's very simply to put a new house up where the old house is. Okay? And, and that's on the corner of Rice and School Street. And I was remiss in kind of breezing through the lot reconfiguration, if I could just address that. This proposal does also include a lot reconfiguration, because as you can see on the plot plan, there's a line that runs all the way through the neighboring lot, basically, which Mr. Holden owns. And this would, this would eliminate that line. This parcel here, the triangle here, would go with this lot, and then the small triangle up in the corner by Rice Street on that plot plan would go with this particular lot in order to make this the 20,000 square foot conforming lot.
Got it.
So, it's a reconfiguration of lot lines and a rebuilding of a house on this lot.
And finally, I'm not losing any block, right?
Correct.
You all heard it.
We're not taking any land from her.
Got it. One on record. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone else that needs to be heard on this matter? Okay, can I get a motion to close the public hearing, please?
Motion to close?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve a special permit or any discussion?
I'll give that to you, Peter.
Okay. I don't have any issues, so I'll move, I move to approve a special permit under Section 4B to demolish and reconstruct a pre-existing non-conforming dwelling at 66 School Street in the rural A District.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, sure, and you can take the smaller ones if you want.
And that, that covers the lot reconfiguration, too. We should vote on that separately. That's fine, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Great.
All right. Next on our agenda. Thank you. All right, I'm going to read. Public hearing for 409 South Street. It's a public hearing continued from August 29, 2022. This is a hearing for a comprehensive permit. Tonight, the board will be focusing on the review of civil site plan for the proposed project and the waivers related to the site plan. The board's peer reviewer, Jeff Walsh from Graves Engineering, will be presenting his findings for his review. Seth Colby, Department Deputy Fire Chief, and Patty Sheehan, Building Inspector, may also add their comments on the waivers and the plans. Also, our consultant from MHP, Paul Haberty, is also in attendance. The applicant will be invited to then share any additional information they have prepared. As part of the site plan review, it's also the board's understanding that there may be work sessions which occur outside of the meeting to address the more technical details of the staff and the peer review comments. Please ensure any revisions made as a result are shared with the board. And Ms. McAllister, would you like to give us a brief update on timelines, please?
We have just a little housekeeping of what's happened since the last hearing, so the applicant has responded to the comment letter that I issued, and your, all of these documents that I referenced in your files. I also submitted a comment letter regarding the waivers and some procedural matters that came up, and they issued a response just this afternoon that was sent out to you. And then, lastly, I'll just say, the chair has made me aware of her request for a architectural review, so I'll be pursuing getting some quotes from various firms to assist that. We are also going out for a geo- to review. So, once the, once those scopes have come in to me, I will reach out to the applicant and request additional peer reviews. And I'm happy to take any questions about that process, too. I also know that we need a Mullen's letter.
Right here?
Yes.
I just only had a blue pen. I'm going to sign it with black.
And this is to just assure Ms. Bartome was not at the last meeting, so she's assured us that she's watched the public hearing and is attesting to that.
The applicant could also sign.
And you.
Yep.
It's blue, anyway.
All right, we'll put that aside. Yeah?
Chris, you can come.
Come on up, Chris, please. Thank you. If you could just sign that and Kristen will take it. Okay, before we proceed, any board members have any questions on any documents that appear in our vast trove of documents?
Okay. I, I actually do. I have maybe a comment and a question. I wasn't at the opening of the hearing in August, but I have, as the Mullen attests to, I did watch the entire meeting and spent hours on all the various documents. So, I, if I could just summarize, and Ms. McAllister or our consultant, if you could just confirm that I'm not getting anything incorrect, that would be great. So, basically, and for board members, too. I, I have participated in evaluating a Chapter 40B permit, comprehensive permit, in the past for the town of Shrewsbury, so this isn't new to me. There were a couple of things, however, that were new to me regarding safe harbor and how we count. And many of the, many of the questions I had were answered, actually, by watching the Board of Selectmen meeting that was August 9. That meeting was with Ms. McAllister, and she did a fantastic job with the letter she submitted and also describing how our town can better manage our affordable housing and be more proactive about it, and how safe harbor can play into our strategy in doing so. So, if you haven't watched that meeting, everybody, please do. So, when, when we are evaluating a comprehensive permit for a Chapter 40B project, the ZBA can address and impose conditions of local concerns such as health, safety, environmental, design, open space, and planning against a region's need, region's need for affordable housing. So, that is basically our job. And what I also learned from our last meeting in August was that the town of Shrewsbury does not have current safe, safe harbor status, so we cannot assert safe harbor to deny this permit, and therefore, we did not in our August meeting. So, going forward, at some point in the future, when we do have safe harbor status and another Chapter 40B project comes before us, the ZBA will need to determine and vote on whether or not to assert safe harbor. So, though I have questions about that, they're irrelevant to the permit that we're evaluating today, because it's just a Chapter 40B permit. Safe harbor has nothing to do with that, and am I correct so far?
Yes.
Okay, okay, great. So, I do have a question, though. Regarding, it's regarding all Chapter 40B projects that come before us. Can you confirm, and this came up in the presentation last month, can you confirm that all the units market or affordable count towards Shrewsbury's subsidized housing inventory, or is there something special about this comprehensive permit before us today?
So, any rental developments that is either 25% affordable at 80% area median income, or 20% affordable at 50% area median income, allows the town to count 100% of the units?
Okay, that's the threshold. Thank you.
Yes.
That confirms it. So, board members, this, this application is special in that regard. Not all of our Chapter 40B projects that come before us may hit that threshold. So, that's why it's so attractive. That's why our appellant presented it as a benefit to us. So, thank you for that. And then, I think I had, I do not. Well, I think there'll be an opportunity to just talk about affordable housing and the definition of subsidized in the future. I won't, I won't talk about it yet. So, thank you for letting me ask those questions.
Any other board members? Okay. Like to at this time, ask peer review Jeffrey Walsh, please, to provide an overview and commentary, please.
Certainly.
Welcome, and thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. For the record, my name is Jeff Walsh. I'm with Graves Engineering. Thank you to you, board and staff, for choosing us. This is my second 40B review in the town of Shrewsbury, the other one being appointed Hills Farm, if I remember correctly. Nevertheless, we do work for a lot of municipalities in both review of 48 applications before planning boards, as well as 40B applications before zoning boards of appeals. Nevertheless, we were charged with reviewing the civil engineering aspect of this project, and to that end, I reviewed, or our office, a staff member, myself, reviewed the plans for conformance with the relevant local bylaws, with the exception of the, and regulations, with the exception of the stormwater. We can dive into that if, if need be. Historically, the 48 projects were being reviewed under those regulations by the Shrewsbury Engineering Department. We certainly can do that. I just carried the status quo. I realize it's a local regulation, not a state regulation, so nevertheless, we can get back to that later on. But again, we, we looked at the zoning bylaws, other relevant regulations, the 40B regulations, as well as the special permit site plan regulations under the planning board. We looked at general engineering. We looked at compliance with the Masti EP Stormwater Handbook and stormwater standards. We looked, reviewed the hydrology calculations that support standard number two, which is peak rate attenuation. And just late today, and I apologize for the, for the 11th hour that this was submitted, we were able to issue a letter, which I understand was circulated. I don't expect anybody to have any, any detailed knowledge of it, so I'd like to give you a broad overview. And I'd like to not speak to every comment, but I'd like to speak to the ones that I feel are important and relevant, have bigger bearing on the project. Before we get into that, I, I'd just like everyone to know that when we review a 40B, we're reviewing for compliance with, you know, relevant regulations, relevant practices to, to determine that enough land has been allocated for the various needs of the project to make sure the project is well-supported from an engineering aspect, civil engineering aspect, and whether it's parking, grading, stormwater management, and so forth. 40Bs, as we know, are dense developments in, by nature, and the important thing from my aspect is to make sure I understand there's adequate land allocated and engineering principles and regulations have been met. And from there, I'd like to go into the letter if I could. I'd like to start with number one. Basically, I put this under the bylaw comments, but waiver requests. When an applicant comes before a board with a 40B and they're looking for waiver requests, there needs to be justification for the waiver request, not just, "We'd like to request a waiver from such and such." I'm sure that during design and programming of the project, thought went into the allocation of space, but I think it's important, from my perspective, to understand, as well as the board's, to understand what the reasoning is for the waiver requests. And many of the technical issues did not have such justification, no explanation. For example, reducing the parking space length from 19 feet to 18 feet, no justification. So, I didn't comment about that at this time. I didn't have strong opposition to it, but nevertheless, I think it's important to understand the reasoning. Moving on, number two, this is with respect to the allocation of space for parking. There's information in the documents submitted that this is a senior campus that requires one parking space for two dwelling units. My read of the, of the application is that this is not an application that calls for housing for older individuals or less mobile individuals that have a reduced parking demand. I see this as an application, and I could be wrong, I see this as an application for an age-restricted or an over-55 type of community that has transportation requirements, parking requirements, not dissimilar to the general public. And so, for setting the baseline of what the number of parking spaces should be, unless there's other information put forward that contradicts what I'm telling you, I believe that the, the zoning bylaw that's requirement for parking spaces is that for residential dwellings of one and a half spaces per dwelling unit. And again, that sets the bar as to whether or not a waiver request is needed for parking. In my opinion, if I'm right about the one and a half spaces per parking unit, then we go down the path of what is the real parking demand and whether or not a waiver is, is prudent or not. For example, the parking demand might be very similar to the, to the zoning bylaw requirement. So, again, I'd like to set the baseline straight before we go on with respect to parking. If my understanding is correct, then the project right now is deficient by 39 parking spaces for, based upon the number of spaces required for the dwellings, plus whatever additional parking is needed for visitors and employees. Moving on to number three, this is almost a housekeeping issue. The bylaw has very clear requirements for side yard setbacks from accessory units, and the plans are very clear that they've identified the, I guess, the setback that gets closest to the property line from one of the accessory buildings. I think it's important to have all the accessory buildings listed. It gives the board an understanding of, is it once, one occurrence, or is it numerous occurrences? And, and that'll just help better understand the extent of impact toward the property lines. I'm going to skip down to number five now, and that is the depth of required parking spaces. They are asking a waiver from 19 feet to 18 feet. I'd like to hear justification. There was a turning template plan provided for the Shrewsbury firefighting apparatus that on one turning maneuver, the overhang of the vehicle got right up to the 18-foot parking space. The point is, if it's 19 feet, now there's not quite enough room. I will say that there might be other ways to maneuver the vehicle. I will say that there might be other ways to maneuver the vehicle around there, but nevertheless, again, allocation of space, and when you take a parking space requirement and couple that with other types of requirements, there may be, any one thing may not be detrimental, but taking collectively, there may be a little more detriment to the project. I'd like to skip down to number 10, and that's with respect to a stormwater discharge. The project is relying on subsurface infiltration to temporarily store water, to infiltrate water to the ground to the extent it's able to in those types of soils, and to release water from that system. It's a controlled release. Of the two major underground storage systems, the discharge for one of those discharges to the applicant's property where the water runs downhill to a wetland, that's less concerning to me. But the other one has a discharge that immediately down gradient is in a butter, a budding property in the water, that even though the down gradient property is receiving runoff today from the project, it's receiving it over a wide swath of area. And now, the stormwater would be concentrated into one very, very localized point where, when I visited the site, there was no evidence that there's a problem with concentrated flow there. So in my opinion, ideally, the release point of the water should be relocated to a place where it will be picked up by the South Street or Hartford Turnpike Drainage System sooner, or an analysis, a deeper analysis has to be done to look at the pre-development, pre-peak rate of runoff, post-run rate of runoff to that one particular project. Right now, that one particular, I'm sorry, that one particular butter is part of a much larger analysis point, and I think it would be prudently broken down to look at that one property by itself. And again, we consider the concentration of flow in greater detail at that time. Just about done. Moving on to number 14, soil testing needs to be done at the stormwater facilities. The application package does include a geotechnical report. It was put together for the building, oh, primarily for the building. It wouldn't be unreasonable to rely on that in some part for the nearby stormwater systems, but nevertheless, groundwater was not called out at 15 feet below grade. However, seepage was occurring much shallower, at about four to six feet. My experience in those types of soils in Shrewsbury and other towns, that's what we call groundwater seepage. It's typically associated with tight soils and seasonal high groundwater, although it's not the type of groundwater you would see in sand and gravel deposits, where it's, the sand and gravel acts like the bathtub and the water comes up. This tight glacial till has low permeability. You get these seepages that are not uncommon. So unfortunately, the, you know, it's concerning to me that, whether or not the infiltration portion of the, one of the two systems will work properly. Of those two subsurface systems, there's another one located in a fill area, which groundwater offset is not an issue, but it's the system on the northern side of the building that it's deep into the ground and is potentially problematic. Moving on to number 17, this is where I got away from regulations and more into the general engineering. Along South Street, if you came down Chestnut Meter left, there's a one, almost, it's almost a one-to-one slope, it's a little bit flat, about one and a quarter horizontal, one foot vertical, still very steep. There's a retaining wall proposed on the project that comes right up to the property line. Basically, the face of the wall, this were a wall and retained earth were behind it, that wall would sit right on the edge of that one-to-one slope. Very close to the road, South Street, very close to utilities that are in South Street. I'm concerned, one, if the town's going to go out and dig up the water main below that wall, open an excavation below a wall that's retaining earth, the stability of the wall, the safety of the excavation, the overall cost to shore up the excavation to do the work, it's not in the town's best interest to have that wall right on the property line. That property, that wall should be set back from the property, a sufficient distance so that the wall can be constructed without current or future impact to any, any U2 South Street, or future work in South Street. Also, I'd be worried if any work occurred that actually impacted the wall later on, excuse me, later on. Moving on to number 18, this speaks to the same area. For vehicles, who's, the drivers are southbound on Chestnut and are preparing to take a left on the south to go down to Hartford Avenue, Hartford Turnpike, I mean, is poor line of sight. And you have to creep out, if you're a driver, a little bit more to see what's going on before you can more comfortably take a left. I feel that the applicant could work with the town to improve those sightlines by excavating the right-of-way in South Street to lower that grade down, so now a driver can look over the grade, and at the same time, the wall could be moved back, and it would provide a much better sightline situation for those turning maneuvers that would benefit both the population in general, but also the vehicles from the project that will be using that intersection. The land that I'm referring to is on the applicant's property. He has direct control of it, and I think that would be a prudent thing to do, again, to both benefit his project as well as the town. Moving on to number 19, I did meet with the building inspector, the assistant town planner, and the deputy fire chief to talk over some of the preliminary concerns raised before I got deep into our review. And I understand that there's a waiver request for the height of the building. And quite simply, the fire department needs to have the necessary resources to provide life safety by getting to the windows and removing people when there's no other way out of the building. I looked at that from a geometric standpoint. I understand roughly what the dimensions of the ladder might be able to reach, and I went through some analysis preliminarily to get a better understanding of where the problematic areas may be with respect to the ladder truck reaching those windows. I think the reach was about 70 feet from the pivot point of the ladder truck to the tallest window on the west side of the building. That center of the access aisle is a little farther away from the building than on the north side or the south side of the building, and the, but the building's five stories, four stories above ground at that location. On the north and south side of the building, I was also around the 70-foot area, more or less, of reach that they would have to have, but it depends on where they set up from. On the south side of the building, there is a section of the driveway that is about 7.7% grade, which I question whether the fire apparatus could set up there. So the point is, the fire apparatus might not be able to use that area and would have to have even farther reach in order to get the windows that were closest to the 7.7% grade. And lastly, there are some interior, there's a courtyard, if you will, that have full five stories exposed, and the fire apparatus can't, at its current, as the plans currently exist, the fire apparatus can't get in there. It's my understanding, the department may not have any way to get to the upper stories of that building. Again, I looked at it from a geometric point of view, and I'd be glad to get deeper into the details as the design of this project moves forward and evolves, and I could work more closely with the fire department to look at, to look at those requirements. But I'd like to add that I think it's prudent that the applicant's team take the first, make the first step at demonstrating to this board whether or not they're satisfying the department's requirements. That's not my job. My job is to review, so I'd encourage the applicant's team to work with the fire department over these concerns. Very important, in my point of view, very important. And with that, there's a number of comments in the number 20 to 29 area. Those are all the boring comments that engineers like to talk about that really need to be addressed, but at this point, they're not the important things that the board, that would impact this decision, as far as I'm concerned. I've pointed out to the board my major concerns, and I'd like to think, you know, discussion on my topics, in addition to the other reviewers, would focus on these at first, and then the more minutia will come out later on. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you very much. Staff members? Present? Comments?
Sure. I'll make a few comments. I'm Patty Sheen, building inspector. And I did meet with Jeff and the deputy fire chief, Seth Colby, and we did review some of our concerns about the waiver request. So some of what I have to say just does overlap with what Jeff just brought out. So in general, waivers for the parking that have to do with the parking are a concern because we want to maintain a safe site, a site that people can access without having maybe vehicles parked where they're not supposed to be in assigned parking spaces or aligned parking spaces that would obstruct the navigating around the site. So the, so the size of the parking spaces going from the required 19 to 18 is a concern. The number of parking spaces not meeting the one and a half per unit plus parking for visitors would also be a concern. Snow storage is a big concern because if you...
He agrees.
If you actually do look, you know, realistically, if you look at sites around town, we have experience with this, it's just unrealistic to think that you can get the snow removed from every single parking space. So snow storage, I do think that snow storage has to be reviewed. Trash removal, you know, how that is going to be removed, removed would have to be reviewed as well. But it's also the shared parking with the loading dock or loading area that would be overlapped with required parking. So people are moving in and out, or you get deliveries, and residents are parked in their parking spots, and you would have to be able, have to have them move in order to have that delivery or someone move in. So those types of things, I think, are just hard to navigate, and they're also hard to manage because, as we deal with, management people change, and they don't always know the ins and outs of how the site is supposed to operate. My other concern is not exactly zoning-related, it's more building code-related, and that's the accessory garage structures. So the garage structures that are located at the closest to the top of the slope, where I'd say it's the steepest, I'm concerned that there isn't enough cover for frost protection on the foundation. So there's a building code requirement for that, and I don't think that's addressed by the documents that we have right now. And then also, we need to get more information as the project evolves about the separation of those garage structures, because we do have to make sure that they have a proper fire rating based on how far apart they are between the structures. So right now, I'm not sure if it's realistic, the way that they're set apart, because there's many of them, that proper fire rating will be achieved. So some zoning and some building code. So just wanted to bring those to your attention. Do you have something to add?
I guess I would, being the last one to go, I kind of be the broken record. Yeah, just to echo some of the stuff that was already said, on the height of the building, I think that was, was well-covered, but the concern is that if we can't get the ladder truck into position, our tallest ground ladder is 35 feet, so that's the most height we can go, and then we have to use an aerial device on, on a truck. So to have the accessibility to be able to get in was, was the concern. Most of the concerns, for me, actually revolve around accessibility. The number of parking spaces is a concern because if they run out of parking spots, then people are just going to parallel park to the curb, and then we lose that access. The site plan only has one, one means of entrance and exit from the site, so if somebody parks on a corner or on a curb, now the fire truck can't get in, and there is no alternate access, so that becomes extra, extra critical. So just the number of parking spaces is a concern, as well as the request to reduce the depth from 19 feet to 18 feet. The, it sounds like the turning radius makes it now, but again, with, as the building inspector said, snow storage and snow removal, they never clean it out perfect to the curb, and after the first snowstorm, now those parking stalls have just become even shorter. We have an apartment complex in town, Imperial Apartments on Boston Turnpike, I believe it's 465 Boston Turnpike, that in the wintertime, it's difficult to get a car in there, let alone get a fire truck in, because the, the snow and everything, and it's so tight to begin with. So that's definitely a concern. And then, I guess, the other thing was the, the grade. You had asked for a waiver to go over 6%, 6% on the grade, and I'm not sure what the, what grade that is that you're actually looking to get to, but eight degrees is the maximum grade that we can have for, and still set up the ladder truck to be fully operational. So that, that's a concern of ours.
Thank you.
I think that's...
Any further comments? I'd give the opportunity now to the applicant to...
If I, Madam Chair, if I had a question for the fire department, would that come later, or can I ask?
You can ask it now.
Okay. Just to, something I hadn't thought of was the access in the courtyard. As currently designed, what would the fire department's options be for getting people out from the courtyard side?
Well, right now, we, is 35 feet, so that's, we'd be able to, depending on the grade, we could definitely do up to the third floor.
Okay.
We, we might be able to make the window sill the fourth, it depends on, on the heights of the, how tall each floor is in the grade.
The 35 feet is the, the vertical, or is that the length of the ladder?
That's the, the length of the ladder, so as soon as you put it on the angle, then...
Yeah.
Then you lose height. So it's not 35 feet high, it's correct.
Right.
And that's the same thing with the, with our ladder truck, when you heard earlier about the reach on that. The, the reach is 90 feet from the center of the turntable to the tip of the bucket, but as soon as you start to bring it up, that falls back, as well as you've got the width of the truck. So the truck, the truck setup, when you put the outriggers out, is almost 18 feet.
So you lose a big chunk.
Outrigger. You lose the width of the, the truck, the outrigger. So before you've even made it past the outrigger, you've used up 10 feet worth of the ladder.
Yeah.
And then as soon as you start to go up on angles, now that becomes shorter and shorter, which I imagine that's how the, the geometry got back to about 70 feet, so.
Right. And you mentioned aerial apparatus, what does that mean?
The ladder truck.
Uh, okay.
Yeah, we'd be, you'd have to be able to get a ladder truck in, in order to get...
I see.
Anything higher.
Okay. Thank you. That's all.
Any other questions from them?
Great. Thank you. I appreciate, appreciate you all coming and sharing your comments, and moreover, preparing them and submitting them to us in advance. So we have had the chance to review the Graves letter, albeit briefly, before we're running out the door again here, but thank you for sending them in advance. That was helpful. So Chris Legutsky here with GrayStar. I've asked Phil Cordero of Allen and Major, our site engineer, to join me here. We also do have other members of our team. We have our land use council and our architect here as well, just in the event that the conversation goes in that direction. So in response to these items, I think that there's a number of technical, technical points here that are, nothing is, is a, is a big surprise, or, you know, but doesn't, doesn't mean that they're not important matters that we, we won't respond to and provide sufficient, you know, review of and answers to. So I just want to start by saying... to. So, I just want to start by saying that there's a couple of things here that I think we can provide some feedback on, and we'd be happy to make this a productive conversation, but ultimately, we're going to follow up with a written response to all of these items, and I'm sure there'll be some additional work that needs to go into proving out all the concerns have been adequately addressed. So, I'll touch on some of the, maybe higher level, operational and just site planning concepts, and then I'll ask Phil if there are any of these items that you'd like to go through, or if you feel prepared to speak about on the fly here. We can do that. The parking ratio is one thing that I respect that this is, you know, we probably, we were trying to fit this use into some category that exists in the bylaws here. So, I agree, this is not a, it is not a, you know, it is a, an active independent community, is not a senior, you know, assisted living or healthcare facility. So, I agree that the parking ratio, you know, maybe is, maybe the baseline wasn't perfectly set, but we were just trying to pick something that seemed to be the best fit from a use category that exists. Now, the conventional parking ratio of 1.5 per, 1.5 parking spaces per unit, by, you know, by the same token, we think that that is, that is higher than what this use really is. I think that we're somewhere in between. So, in terms of picking a baseline, I do think that's right. It's important to think about what the categories are that exist in the bylaws, but ultimately, we're somewhere in between. So, I have, you know, we've gotten to the parking ratio and the parking space sizes by thinking about two things. One is utilization, right? What do we need? What do we need? What do our residents need? What is typical operationally when we manage these communities? What sort of parking space count is productive and sufficient for the residents and their guests and all other transit uses that we have on the site? So, our target on an active adult project is 1.2 parking spaces per residential unit. This project is at about 1.3. I'd be happy to share our portfolio and the parking ratios and unit mix to just get the board comfortable with that, and, you know, we can be as, just because we own and manage all of those communities, I have a lot of access to information there. And it is a somewhat nuanced use, right? There, it is, I would, you know, I would strongly resist that it is a conventional apartment community. It's, we just don't see the kind of parking utilization that we do in our conventional, non-age restricted parking, multifamily communities. So, I think that, you know, we've designed this to be on the more generous end of what we see utilization rates at within active adult 55-plus communities, being at about 1.3 here versus our standard baseline of 1.2. And as far as the parking size go, I think that that and finding that efficient parking count go hand in hand, and that we are, we have designed the site to have the parking immediately accessible around the building. And one of the things we talked about last month is just the access points and the vertical transportation throughout the building. The whole intent here is to have quick, quick points of entry from where the vehicle is parked, right, to allow for easy, safe, in all weather conditions, access into the building, and vertical transportation with more elevators than we would put in a conventional apartment building to get residents to their units, right? So, the concern with going to larger parking spaces and adding additional parking is that, you know, there really isn't a good way to do that without peeling away the parking and creating really inefficient and sometimes, you know, necessitating stairs or ramps or other things to battle with the site grading, right? There really isn't, we think that this is the most efficient way to achieve the parking that we need while also providing that utility and that access into the building without creating rows of parking or also increasing the amount of impervious space that we have on the site, right? We've tried to maintain the footprint as efficiently as we can here. So, you know, more, you can make the argument that more is, why not more, right? Why not more parking? Why not, why not, why not fill the, you know, more of the site with paved spaces? And it's, you know, it's maintenance of that impervious area, I'm sorry, of the permeable area on the site, and also maintaining that immediate access into the building entryways and not requiring residents to go through stairs, ramps, or just longer walking distances to get into their building. Things like trash removal, loading dock, all those operational items, I would be happy to provide sort of an operational plan on how we think about that, how we manage the multiple uses of those parking areas throughout the day. That is, that was one of the first things that we tackled when we were laying out the concept here, right? We've gone through iterations, and, you know, you sort of start with varying degrees of driving factors and how you design the building, and that was high on the list, so I'd be happy to talk more about that. But, you know, rest assured, it's something that our operations team is comfortable with, and we do in, you know, a lot of the properties that we manage. This is actually, on the grand scheme of things, would be a lot easier than some of the, some of the operational challenges that we have to have in oftentimes more urban or complicated sites. So, but we'll provide that, you know, that operational insight and plan there. I think that a lot of these other items would be more on the technical side, so I will resist the urge to try to answer them and maybe let Phil take a shot at them. I'm happy to add more color if I can.
Thank you, Chris. For the record, Phil Cordero from Allen and Major Associates. We're appreciative of the feedback from town staff and also Mr. Walsh at Graves Engineering. They certainly raised some points that we will study. We obviously don't have direct answers to them all as we sit here this evening, you know, so we'll take that information and we'll look forward to workshopping it, as Madam Chair alluded to, and the assistant town planner afforded us the opportunity to do, to work with town staff and your consultant to work through what the changes could ultimately be, then re-present that information to the board. The information that we have, that we've looked at, that we've picked up from Graves, from your town staff, I think there are solvable problems here in terms of what was raised as the most emergent concerns. So, we'll just get to work on that, quite frankly. We're happy to talk through it here tonight in terms of the technical aspects. I don't know if that's a good use and efficient use of the board's time. So, you know, we'll take it out to another smaller table, the kitty table at Thanksgiving, and sort of roll up our sleeves to get to work, and the next time we come back, hopefully, we will have resolved all of that, or at least in a manner we present it back to the board cooperatively. Happy to answer anything that the board would like, though.
I have a lot of questions. I'm not sure where to start. Come back to me.
Okay.
Lisa?
So, having gone through this before, it is, the appellant received our peer review right before coming to this meeting. So, it's typical that they need to take that back, go back to the, not the drawing board, but to the table, as you said, and you will be back and you'll present your response to each one of those items, and we'll have the opportunity to ask more questions then, and I'm perfectly fine doing that.
On item number 10, I think it was, with regard to the stormwater discharge, I think Jeff had pointed out that one of the discharges was going to impact on an abutter's property. Have you had the opportunity to reach out to that abutter, to talk to them about it?
Through the chair. We've not spoken to the abutter. So, the philosophy that we undertake with the stormwater is understanding where it's going today and mitigate any increases that we will have as a result of this project. So, the discharge point that Mr. Walsh pointed out is mimicking where it's going today. Obviously, under existing conditions, it is farmland and woodland, so the characteristics are different versus concentrating the flow. We endeavored to put what's called a flow dissipator, a level spreader at the end. So, what happens is you take the flow coming out of your pipe and try to disperse it more equally to, again, mimic those pre-existing conditions. Concern heard, and we can talk through what that means, but at this point, we've not felt the need to reach out to that abutter. The calculations that we put forth that we'll ask your town staff and your consultant to review is that we meet the current discharge standards, thereby asserting that there's no adverse runoff condition to that abutter that might otherwise necessitate actually meeting with them. So, I think the way I would leave it is, let us work with your consultant. We'll talk through the design in a little greater detail. If, obviously, those concerns remain, we're happy to speak to the abutter, but we'd want to understand it just a little bit further, you know, through your staff.
Thank you.
And if I could add in there, that conversation with the abutter would not be permission to discharge onto their property in a way that would be inappropriate. Happy to have the conversation, make sure that everyone who is concerned about being affected by this is comfortable with what we're doing, but ultimately, we need to convince ourselves and you all that, from an engineering perspective, that the stormwater runoff is contained on site as it should be, and there isn't an adverse impact on any of the abutters.
Madam Chair, sorry. I don't have any questions for the appellant, but I did want to make a comment about the peer review and comments from town staff. So, thank you so much. I really appreciate all of, all that's been raised, and prior to seeing your peer review and hearing your comments and seeing the plan proposed last month, I'll say that my big concerns were the height of the building and the Chestnut and South Street intersection. So, thank you for those recommendations. I am very interested in hearing more about your parking space proposal and how our building inspector views that and our fire department. I wasn't as concerned until I heard your comments, so thank you. And I just wanted to let you know, those are my top things at the moment. There could be more.
Patrick?
Yeah, my main concern from the first time that they were here was the parking. And as soon as he started speaking of that, I was like, well, that's what I was thinking. So, I'd like to hear more on that one, if that's available.
Be a lot of meetings, I suspect, in the next month. Anybody else? Can I open up to the public? We're good?
Yes, please.
One thing I'd like to run by the board while we're speaking of parking is, I've seen the concept of reserve banked parking used before, and that's when there's a certain number of parking spaces constructed, physically constructed, pavement striped, ready and used. But the reserve or the banked parking, space allocated for the parking spaces, not encumbered by buildings or other amenities that can't be moved, and if the assumptions of parking don't pan out, the demands change and get worse or what have you, there's a mechanism by which the operator and owner of the property could construct parking on those reserved spaces. Basically, it would be lawn play area, something like that. In theory, it's a great idea, from my perspective, allocation of space. However, when it comes to enforcement, I'm not sure how easy that is. So, I wanted to bring that to the board's attention only because, depending on how the discussions of parking spaces and the ratios and so forth play out, that's one potential solution. But again, it's the enforcement mechanism. What triggers them to have to construct the spaces? It's on private property. Certainly, you know, they could choose to build out the reserved spaces at any time, but if they choose not to, is there a way to enforce them to do that? I don't have those answers, but I would at least make everybody aware of the concept, and if the board was dead set against it or possibly open to it, you know, future discussions might lead the applicant's team one way or the other.
Just to be clear on that, that is, it doesn't exist. It's not additional parking spaces like guest parking or...
Right. Right. It would be just space allocated that if there's a problem whereby they need more parking, the space allocated would have to be constructed for the parking spaces.
Like you said, like a playing field or something like that?
Could be a playing field. So, I've seen them be landscaped grass areas around the periphery of a project. What you'll see around the main access aisle here is almost all the spaces encumbered already.
Yeah.
With either garages or walkways, buildings and so forth. So, right now, I'm not seeing any large tract of land that might jump out at me for 20 more parking spaces or 30 more parking spaces.
Yeah.
Ms. Sheen, did you have a comment on that?
So, I was going, thank you for bringing that up, Jeff, about the reserved parking spaces, because we do have that in our bylaw, but it is very hard to enforce because we do have that applied at our Total Wine, Trader Joe's Plaza, where, you know, it's very busy over there for parking. So, we have a reserved parking space area, but trying to enforce that is very, very difficult. So, and this is more private property, so it'd be even more difficult here where those, that plaza is where the public goes, so we would have more jurisdiction over private property. If cars do end up parking, like the deputy chief said, at the curb, which is very likely, especially visitors, since we don't really have visitor parking, people will have visitors. It's, it'd be a little tough to account for reserved spots, but it may be something for you to, a reserved parking area, but it may be something for you to look into. I also don't know if the perimeter of the main project allows for it for grading purposes.
Yeah.
So, but that is a good point for Jeff to bring up.
Madam Chair, I have another question, this time for the appellant. I'm so sorry, I, at the last meeting, I don't recall if there was discussion, I think there might have been, about sidewalks on Chestnut or even around the perimeter of your property, even on the Vista side? Is there any thoughts to that, or was that discussed at last meeting? Anybody?
That I recall.
And I recall sidewalks.
Sidewalk conversation.
Then, Mr. Walsh, did your peer review go into anything about sidewalks?
I considered that, and I am a proponent of pedestrian traffic. My first, and I'm glad you brought this up, because I did some reading of the application material after I issued my letter. Whenever there's an opportunity to tie a project that could generate pedestrian traffic, such as this, into something nearby, I think, I think it's very important for the project, for the safety of those pedestrians. To the north on Chestnut Street is, I don't know the name of the facility now, but it's that large
New Mass.
Campus office area, and there's a nice walking system through that. Granted, that's on private property, and I didn't even look to see if there were sidewalks along Chestnut Street at that point.
I don't think so.
My first crack at, well, there are sidewalks on South Street, and it would be prudent, thank you for bringing that up, because I, it would be prudent to tie this project to the South Street sidewalk system, without a doubt. When I walked the South Street for the Centec Park North project, I was walking on a sidewalk.
Right.
It didn't even click. When I visited this site, I was focused on Route 20. I said, why would anybody want to walk down to Route 20? Well, first of all, let me share this. I think it's prudent to tie this sidewalk system here, at least into South Street, because people can head north up there and go up toward the, I think there's a CVS up there now.
Yes, yeah, and apartments and things like that.
Yep, and a nice food shop at one time.
Thai restaurant. Thai restaurant.
Thank you. And also, in reading through those documents late today, at the 25% level, according to the traffic report, there's consideration for pedestrian crosswalk at the intersection of South Street and Route 20 that is years away, but those years will be here before you know it. So, consideration should be brought to, should be given to bring in the sidewalk system, I think, down toward that intersection, and if excavation's going on to fix the sightlines on the project, opponent's side of the project, it's, a sidewalk system is, after the grading, the major grading's done, the sidewalk system's pretty, pretty easy. Granted, the grading may not get all the way down to the intersection, but I think it's important to take a look at connections or extensions of the sidewalk from the project to where other projects could pick up later on.
Okay. So, just know, one board member thinks it's pretty important to look at the sidewalk situations in your, in your plan and consider including them? I don't know about my fellow board members.
No, I think that's a good, really good point.
I'd agree to that.
And it might... And it might also encourage less, you know, if you know you can live in a place without, if you can walk to amenities, then maybe your argument on the reduction in parking would be, you know, a little more palatable. Any other comments? Okay, this is a public hearing, is there anybody that wishes to be heard? Sir, could state your name and address for the record?
Yeah, David Singer, 400 South Street. A few concerns, obviously, some new concerns have been raised here tonight, and finally, I've been coming to these meetings over Centec Park. We sat in front of this board, I've pleaded with somebody to actually get a true feeling of that Chestnut and South Street intersection, and Mr. Walsh did a very good job of understanding that. There's nothing obstructing any views right now and cars always need to pull out. Rowan, I'm not sure how far the pictures made it across the board, but we had another car end up in our front yard upside down with another near fatality this Saturday, so hopefully you'll be getting, see, this is, I have three accident reports in my hand from just the last two months on our street. Two of them from cars crashing through our front property coming south on South Street from Route 9 to Route 20. One ended up actually in the bottom of our driveway, Rowan had gotten earlier pictures of that. The third accident was when they were doing some roadwork on South Street. The road was blocked off, we had access to our driveway. Some impatient driver couldn't wait to go around the detour and backed right into, into my wife's vehicle, which is down, you know, being repaired right now. To understand the true dangers of South Street, to, to understand every vehicle that comes down that road is like a death vehicle and a potential death vehicle. The more pedestrians you put onto that little stretch of road from where, say, the farm ends on South Street, the more opportunities you're going to have for accidents. It's a fast road. It declines, there's no speed limit, and these are just the recent accidents from, you know, these past couple of months. So, as we kind of go through some of the technicalities with fire departments and things like that, we still haven't really talked about the real dangers. I've requested, I've asked, and I would really like to see a peer attractive review happen from my front yard. Watch as 18-wheelers come barreling down South Street. It's a constant downhill slope from when you crest coming up from Route 9 to when you go down to Route 20. Fortunately, nobody's been seriously hurt in this. I could have died twice in the last two months. This is a major and serious safety issue, health issue, and whatnot, when it comes to some of the parking issues, ironically. Just the other day, my wife works at Trader Joe's, so when I went to pick her up, good time to pick up some, something at Total Wine, and I happened to comment, all the double parkers that were parking in front of Total Wine and trying to pick her up, to just pick her up at the end of Trader Joe's, all the double parkers, so to replicate that, to kind of analyze that or put that into analogy to this place, it's a mess in that Total Wine, you know, parking lot. The, the space ratio, they said it's a kind of 1.2, it kind of meets their standards. My wife and I, we're 56, we both have cars, we both need our cars, most of the people in this place are going to be very active people, that both will need their cars. Heck, my dad's 84, he and his wife, who's 80, still have their cars. People are a lot more active these days than they used to be. I just don't see how you can really seriously think about giving a waiver on the 1.5 space. Disappointing that there is concerns about runoff to the abutters, but the appellant is not willing to speak to the abutter at this point and some of the concerns. There's a lot of water that drains off of South Street. A few years ago, the, the town put an extra drain in front of my house to take care of some of the water because we're having flooding issues. There's still water issues whenever it rains. I can't imagine what South Street looked like with that rain that came through just a, just a little bit ago. So, there's a lot of existing issues that's still there. We know this is the early part of the process, but we need to still continue and make safety, talk about sidewalks. There's no space right now on South Street, really, to put any sidewalks. So, that would probably be most of my main concerns here tonight as, as these meetings continue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Singer, appreciate it. Anyone else wish to be heard?
Hello, how are you? I'm Nancy Bradley, I own Dottie Jeans Pet Resort and Daycare Center. I'm not going to go over all the parking, but I'm 60, so I rent an apartment from you as a single person. I need somebody that wants to move in with me, but I don't have parking for that person. They're rental properties, which means that they don't stay, so the parking can change year to year. Who needs what, when they need what and how many needs? So, that will change. And to put a sidewalk going down to 20, where are they going once they get there? Where are you going when you get through 20? Across? No, maybe to CVS, but like he's saying, those trucks with the cars on them, they don't care that you're there. And as they come barreling down Chestnut, they're scraping out at the bottom of Chestnut to do that turn. And in the wintertime, the drainage at that hill, that little, little hill, you, you can't, you creep down that little hill because you're just going to slide right into South Street. It's really dangerous. And to put a wall there, when you come from Route 9 and you want to turn onto Chestnut Street, you turn, you go by the first entrance and turn in, but that's also where people go out. Very few people use that little part because they don't know if somebody's going to be coming up it. So, that whole little area is so congested and no one really knows what they're supposed to do when they get there. I also have the concern about the parking garage that was going to be six feet from the property line of 85 Chestnut Street. Is that really fair to be able to put a parking garage that close to that property line? Does it affect down the line if I buy the property or whatever? I have those concerns. Then, the, it is active, but there's no public transportation, so if you're going to say that they don't need all these cars, there's not a bus coming to take these people, there's no public transportation, so they're going to have cars. They're renters. They're most likely going to be still continuing to work. So, that was my biggest concerns, is the parking, and of course, you know, once again, the noise level, you know, how that's going to affect, and I know we're still in the process of figuring that out. But Chestnut Street is not a little street. It's a little street, but it's a very dangerous street. That building, UMass, just got sold, God only knows what's going in there. That, at 6:30, 6 o'clock, it's like ants going to work sometimes, so it is still very dangerous at that time. So, that's, for me, my concerns with still this project, but again, once, mine's the noise level, and that's all I'm concerned about. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Anyone else? You could please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Radhija Frederick, and my husband and I, Andrew Frederick, own the property at 10, 410 South Street. So, I'm just going to give you my perspective as far as safety. So, we're the parent of four kids, and we actually forbid our kids from being in front, front yard, so just because of the safety issue and, and the way the traffic, traffic is coming down. So, kind of hard, the last two are 14-year, 14-years-old, it's kind of hard to kind of keep them up from, you know, being in the front, you know, playing or, or, you know, just being kids. But as a safety, it's very difficult. We live right across from Chestnut Street, and the last incident that happened for us was SUV that was trying to come down and trying to avoid another car that was coming up and ended up hitting the electric pole. So, the electric pole is right on the edge of our property and anything could have happened at this time, so this is the kind of things that goes on, you know, for us. And when it comes onto the water, if it rains very heavy, then the whole street end up being like, it's literally like waterfall coming down. So, I just want to give you guys the perspective on what we live.
Thank you, Ms. Frederick. Anyone else in the audience wish to be heard on this matter? Okay. Anyone else? Any other comments before we?
I have an agenda question. When is the traffic analysis? What meeting is that scheduled for? Do we know?
That, at this point, is scheduled for October 24th. So, the next meeting.
Okay.
Yep.
Great. So...
Is the track analysis being done October 4th or that's going to be for the next meeting?
So, I'm currently in conversations with McMahon, our peer reviewer for traffic. I'll be meeting with them this week or next to, to kind of give our existing feedback that the board has given, and then they'll begin their review, hopefully to issue a letter with enough time to review and discuss.
So, to answer the question that was asked, has the appellant already performed a traffic analysis report that the peer reviewer reviewed?
Has it happened yet?
So, the peer reviewer has, I believe is currently reviewing it.
Okay, so a...
What was it submitted?
Thank you. So, a traffic analysis support, report, I can't speak, was performed, and typically our traffic, the traffic analysis reports include traffic studies done at different times of day and crash reports that at least were filed with the police and a number of other things. I expect it's as extensive as other ones I've seen, and it's currently being reviewed by our peer reviewer, and they will give us comment on the next October meeting. Okay.
If I could just make one comment, then David Singer, 400 South Street on that would be also to, can we get somebody to come stand at 400 South Street beyond that and into the review and have that considered, is what we do here. As I said to Rowan in the email today, you can come during 8 to 12, you can come during certain times of the day. This accident was 12:30 on Saturday. The other accident through my property was 6:30 on a Friday. There's no set time, there's no good, bad time, 24 hours a day. That is a dangerous, dangerous road. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any other comments?
Did you want to say anything about traffic analysis or? I'll speak to that, just as a board member. So, you'll have a chance to, you can look at the traffic analysis report, you'll also have a chance to come in October. I drive South, South Street right by your house every day, actually, but it's early in the morning. I know exactly what you're talking about. I don't know if anyone will come to your house at the specific time you're requesting, but the traffic analysis report indicates crashes that did happen at different times of day, so our peer reviewer will look at all of that and give their comment, and we will take that into consideration.
Any other comments? Okay. Can I get a motion to continue the meeting to October 24th?
Motion to continue the comprehensive permit for 409 South Street to the October 24th zoning board of appeals meeting.
Can I get a second?
At 6:30?
6:30.
Okay.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Yeah.